To the Pl- Moderating Planning Commission, if we could have roll call.
Definitely. First, we have Chair Brassfield.
Present.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson. Commissioner Dawson is muted.
Okay, here.
There you are. Thank you. Commissioner Fletcher. Also, I may be having an audio delay. Commissioner Fletcher, can you please confirm that you're here?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Millich. Is... Let me see, we don't have visual on Commissioner Millich, but I do see that he is in the meeting. I'm going to unmute him.
I'm trying to get it. I'm, I'm on my phone right now and I'm going to hook up with my computer, which will be a, a visual. I'm in the process of doing that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for confirming that you are here and you can at least hear us.
Yes, I can.
Wonderful. And finally, Commissioner Reed.
Present.
You forgot me.
I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Latassa.
I'm here.
Thank you for reminding me. Sorry about that. I also will take this time to just announce how to join to provide public comment. This initial public comment session will just be for items not on the agenda at this point in the meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate. To join the meeting from a computer or a phone, use the link or phone numbers listed on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you will find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, that is 833-568-8864. If one phone number does not work for you, there are others posted on the agenda, again at iSearchMonterey.org. You will need a webinar ID for this meeting, which is 161-990-8039. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. To provide public comment, use the raise your hand button in Zoom at the bottom of your screen. If you are providing public comment by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters calling in by phone will be announced using the last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom if you are online. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected by phone as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised, and the chair has designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within your time limit. And right now, I do see that we have some attendees, but none of their hands are raised. So just a quick refresher, to raise your hand, and this is for items not on the agenda, to raise your hand, dial star nine, and then star six to unmute when you are called upon. And I currently still do not see any hands raised, so I would say share. I think it's okay to continue.
Well, let's make an official announcement that it is open, so if you get someone raising their hand shortly, just let me know. Other than that, excuse me?
Just agreeing with you.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, let's talk about the minutes from the last meeting, and I will be abstaining on that because I was not present. Any comments from the commission?
I move to approve I submitted.
Thank you, Hudson. And we have a second? Second. We have Hudson and, and Mike as a first and second. Could we take a roll call?
Yes, and Chair Brassfield, you already mentioned you are abstaining, and Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Millich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Wonderful. Those minutes are passed. They are approved with six oh.
Thank you. I understand Chris is going to be making presentations today on two items on the agenda. And we have, as I understand, legal counsel present to ask any questions on, on one of the issues. So, Chris, junior court.
Great, thank you, Chair Brassfield. My name is Chris Schmidt, and I'm a senior associate planner for the city of Monterey. And I've been working with the applicant property owner and neighbors on this project. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and, excuse me, I, I take it back, I'm starting with the development agreement. Able to, to mention, so this is a, a separate project that actually Kim has been working on, but had asked that I, I work with her and, and present this application. So, we're looking at the first amended development agreement for the Del Monte Beach community project. The staff recommendation is that the commission recommends city council approve an ordinance, which would adopt the First Amendment amended development agreement. So some background information about this project, so in 2001, the council approved a re-subdivision of, of many lots, both residential and commercial lots, into standard lots, and that development agreement to develop these lots as single-family dwellings expires in January of 2022. Three lots remain undeveloped, 20 and 22 Spray Avenue and 205 Dune Crest Lane. And the owner of 20 and 22 Spray Avenue have applied for the amended agreement to extend it until January 17th, 2029. And I want to make the distinction that I think the staff report had a typo, which said 2028, that the agreement actually does say 2029. And then also 205 Dune Crest Lane is not included in the extended agreement. They do have plans to build a home at their site, and they're hoping to get an approved building permit before the development agreement expires. We have reached out to them to see if they would also want to extend their development agreement, and that, that, those talks are still pending. So just a little bit more background information, I think we wanted to, to, to give some, some history of, of the, the re-subdivision process and how it evolved over time to, to the, you know, existing lot configuration you see on the right-hand side. So I believe the staff report lays out that there were, I, I believe is a total of 48 lots planned in this location, and, and ultimately, a much smaller number were approved, and, and that was because the city council at the time really wanted to be sensitive to the habitat, to the coastal dunes area in, in terms of coastal erosion, bi- biological resources, et cetera. So you see on the right-hand side, the Spray extension, and if you can see my cursor, this is Spray Avenue. So there were, there were quite a few more homes planned at this location. Likewise, Dune Crest Lane, which is south of, of the Spray extension, you can see my cursor spray. Dune Crest Lane was planned to have a, a, also more homes, and there were only just a, a couple, three, three new lots. And so this is the, the, the other lot that is proposed. So what is the planning commission's role with this development agreement amendment? So the municipal code establishes the requirement that the PC find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan. And here, I just wanted to show the two sites in question, and I will note that I think this is eight, lot 18 here, or 18 Spray rather, has actually been developed as well. So these three are the three that are remaining. So the, the site has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential, so we typically like to see single-family homes at these land use designated sites. And then it also has a zoning district of R15D1, again, also a single-family. So looking at the analysis, where, where the, the planning commission must make the finding that the amendment is consistent with the general plan, staff has, has been able to make this finding that, that the amended would be consistent with the low-density residential land use designation as the sites would be developed with single-family dwellings. The extension of the agreement would allow for those dwellings to be developed before the current agreement expires. And then the water allocation at the sites would remain, and a, a sum would be collected from the applicant in order to incentivize, incentivize affordable housing at the discretion of the city council. So again, staff recommendation is to recommend city council approval of an ordinance, which would amend the development agreement. I'm available for questions, and Kim, I, I believe, can answer questions as well, then, and I believe the applicant's legal counsel is, is on the call, I believe.
Any questions of Chris?
Yeah, what happens if the owners of 20 Spray and 22 Spray don't get their building a permit application in before January of 2022? What happens to those properties?
I can answer that. So they, they would lose their allocation of water. And one, one thing, one point that I didn't make in the presentation, these, when these sites were rezoned, they were given very specific development standards in terms of the building footprints and a maximum height of, I believe, 16 feet. And so the, the sites would actually revert back to the R1 standards, where there would be a maximum height of 25 feet, and the typical setbacks would apply. So there's kind of that trade-off, where they're, you're, you're looking at, you know, the much lower homes under the development agreement and already set footprints with water. And so if, if, if they don't get their agreement, one, one day, if water is available, they would be able to build homes at the, the typical city development requirements.
Yes, I would like just to add one point of clarification. This is Kimberly Cole, the community development director. I think there's one, I'm, I'm not sure the last statement Chris made was conclusive. I think there is a a, one argument that the homes could be built at 25 feet, but we would have to go back through the whole complete legislative history of the coastal permits to understand that in more detail. So I think what we're looking at for this development agreement, the city was very aggressive 20 years ago in the re-subdivision of this, of these properties, trying to obtain, reducing development potential from 48 units down to 12 with two open space parcels, is to complete this project that was originally envisioned by the city council and allow the remaining two single-family homes to be constructed. We will retain their current water allocation with this process and receive some compensation in exchange for that. So that's why we're recommending that the planning commission can, can find it consistent with the general plan vision for low-density residential and some of the other provisions of the general plan.
So you think that the owners should want this to go through?
Oh, they do. They've applied.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Yes. Chair, a question. So this this fee for affordable housing that's being paid, can you explain that? I guess, if, would it be the case if this was a new application for a new subdivision like this, that there would be actually, some of these houses would have to be affordable, and that, or it, and I guess, just explain what the affordable housing fee is, and roughly how much per lot they're actually paying?
Sure, I'd be happy to explain that. So first of all, the, the fee that we're recommending to the city council, the city council will be the ultimate, ultimate body that agrees to the financial terms of the agreement. It's 72,000, I think, approximately $72,000 in total, so you can divide that by two, and you can understand the amount per lot. How we derived that amount is the city of Pacific Grove, not too long ago, they have water available for allocation and purchase, and so they developed a fee, and so I looked at that fee, and then we added a cost of living increase to it to compensate the city for to be able to, I guess, to allow us to sup- supplement our affordable housing programs. If this was just the construction of two new single-family homes, under today's law, no affordable housing requirement would exist. It's really the general plan provision for water allocations that would direct us, and we're not doing a new water allocation here. We are arguing for an extended water allocation in front of the city council, and that's why development agreements can go above and beyond what's normally required by your zoning ordinance. This is an agreement between both the, the private parties in the city, trying to achieve both of our objectives. I would say if there was a brand-new subdivision on the books of 12 parcels, we could require, I think it's anything over five, could require low-income housing 20%, however, this really isn't the scenario. And in fact, when the city council approved the subdivision, there are findings why they didn't require affordable housing with this project, and they had findings about, the major objective of the city council 20 years ago was to reduce the development potential from 48 to 12 lots, was to maintain this open space area, to maintain the habitat and coastal erosion, and address all those environmental issues. So what we see happening on the other end of Del Monte Beach, where the Del Monte Beach townhomes go basically into the water today, wasn't going to be repeated on the other side of the subdivision, and that was the major objective of the city council 20 years ago, when they pursued this very aggressive, I'd say, development agreement and re-subdivision.
Okay, thanks.
Through the, through the chair, may I add a, a, Kim to your response? I'm Adam Lindgren, outside counsel for the city on, on this project. I helped Kim negotiate and prepare this amendment. I helped Kim negotiate and prepare this amendment. I, I think in, in addition to our analysis, it was important that the water allocations, as it relates to the affordable housing issue, are not new water allocations. The project and these units already have them. So what we were really talking about is what would be fair consideration, consistent with, with the, the, the current times to extend the amount of time that those water allocations would be committed, would be, continue to be committed. But we're not dealing with the situation where we're, we're issuing new, allocating new allocations.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
To what extent, if any, does saltwater intrusion affect the, the building on these lots? Twenty years ago, it wasn't considered. Now it's something that we're looking at as a city to see what the sea levels are going to be. I'm just wondering, what if any effect this would have on the building of the, on those two lots? Anybody answer that?
So I would suggest that the, there's existing calam meters at most of these sites. They were installed with the original infrastructure of the project. So there's no new meters required, and this is from our existing allocations. So there is no new, you know, with this is, this doesn't give out water, that we have a little trickle of water remaining in our allocation that we can give out. And that's based on, you know, an existing water supply.
I've saw water intrusion, Kim. To what extent, if any, does that affect the buildability of the lots? So I guess we're, we're looking at, what is the elevation of these lots above the high tide level? And what, what is the level to be expected?
Oh, you're, oh, you mean sea level rise. You're talking about sea level rise and how far it's.
Yeah, excuse me for not stating it properly.
Oh, okay. We can bring up those maps for you based on the coastal viewer. And we can show where the, I think if I remember correctly, in fifty years, we're looking at it reaching the lowest road on Del Monte Beach. And it's another fifty to a hundred years before it hits further up on the dune. This is considerably up further on the dune than what we see in the next hundred and fifty years. But let me pull up our coastal erosion study.
Yeah, I think if there are, these lots are up like thirty or forty feet.
I can pull it up, though.
That's just a question. I mean, we don't have to be.
And Kim, this is, you may, Chris, perhaps you just pull up the site map again so that they can all see the location of the particular parcels within the project. That's quite informative. And as you all know, there's a considerable grade in that area.
I think I, I would be satisfied to know what Ken was proposing as opposed to the site map. I just would like to know how many feet remain, you know? How many feet are we above sea level? And when is that expected? The saltwater intrusion expected to occur then? If it's fifty years, a hundred years, a hundred and fifty years, that's what I'd like to know.
So if you could, if there's any other questions? And if not, maybe we go out to public comment while I pull up the various.
I, I have a question, a couple, a couple of questions. Chris, could you show us those sites that are supposed to be undeveloped in that area?
Currently undeveloped?
Well, the ones that are supposed to be open space.
Right, okay. So the, the large, if you can see on the, the image on the right, the, the large parcels in the, in the front here, there's this, this parcel that's kind of in between the developments. That's also an open space lot. And then the one that, that's founded by Del Monte Avenue and, and the single family.
Okay. That's the, the two that you mentioned in the project are the ones within the yellow line.
The two, the two that have been undeveloped, is, is that what you're asking?
Well, as, as I recall reading among this ream of paper, there was a mention of a couple of, of open space sites. And are they included around those two building sites?
I'm, I'm happy to help too, if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I think I understand the question. So what this open space here is, it does have a, a shared property line with one of the homes that's proposed for the development extension, or amendment, rather. But that's the only bound line there.
Okay. And then my, my next question goes to water. I mean, it gets really confusing, I'm sure, to the public as well as us, that when we talk about allocation of water, some of it refers back to the Water Authority. And, and now we're hearing that this is a city issue. So if you could explain it?
I appreciate it.
So I guess I'll add, so these properties, there's, the city had a water allocation for many, many years where we were able to provide a little bit of water towards projects as they were being constructed. We've now run out of that, basically that supply of water that we used to be able to continue projects. This is one of the very few projects in the city that still remains on our books for twenty and twenty-two Spray and two oh five Dune Crest. That water allocation will expire in the development agreement in January of twenty twenty-two. So what we're proposing is that we will continue that water allocation through twenty twenty-nine to allow them to finish their projects. And so this, this sort of predates our current situation and a lot of the current conversation. I have the graphic to show sea level rise, if you'd like me to.
I would like to, either.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this study was prepared by Dr. Dave Revel. It was part of our coastal plan. And what you see here is twenty thirty, twenty sixty, and twenty-one hundred coastal hazard areas. And it doesn't, what's going to be threatened during those periods is the Del Monte Beach townhomes. And the development, you know, maybe this first row of homes during that period. This, the, because of the topography change, these areas that have been developed up here on Spray and on Dune Crest are outside of those planning horizons.
Okay, so they're, they're not affected?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, let's go to public comment, if we would, Jennifer.
Thank you for your patience, as I just continue, finished typing. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers listed on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, toll-free. If one, if this number does not work for you, there are others posted on the agenda again at isearchmonterey.org. You will need a webinar ID to enter this meeting. For this meeting, it is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once again, this webinar's ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once you are in the Zoom meeting to provide public comment, use the raise your hand button if you are on Zoom online or the app at the bottom of the screen. If you are providing public comment by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Again, that is star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using the last three digits of your phone number if you are calling in by phone. Otherwise, I will call on you based off of the name that you type into Zoom. And finally, just a reminder that we do have a three-minute time limit for this meeting. And I do see a couple of hands raised. First, John Bridges, I will call on you to allow you to speak. And you should have permission to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good afternoon, planning commission. My name is John Bridges. I represent the property owner. She Hong, and I've been working closely with her son-in-law, Viral Sithnanaden, who I believe may also be on the Zoom meeting, and he may have some remarks as well. I just wanted to thank staff, Kim and Adam and Hans, who have spent a lot of time analyzing this and working with us to bring this application for an extension of the development agreement forward to you. I think they have done a better job than I could today in answering your questions. I, I think the only thing I would add for your consideration, and this was relating to one of the questions, one of the latter questions asked about relationship to open space. If we look at the aerial photo in the staff report, figure one, you can see pretty readily that these two lots are more or less completely surrounded, with one minor exception there in the back that Kim pointed out. They're, they're surrounded by other existing homes. So this is an infill exercise, as Kim said, to complete the city's vision for this land and for this neighborhood. And we have worked closely with the staff in terms of all of the details of the agreement. Again, Adam has been instrumental in that. And we would commend this to you for your favorable recommendation to the city council. I would be happy to answer any questions I might be able to, but I would, and I'm happy to do that. But I would also like to be sure that Viral has an opportunity to speak if he is there. I can't see him, but I presume he's got his hand up. Thank you all.
Any questions of this gentleman?
And Jennifer, I believe Viral is with VBS as the applicant, so that would be the next public comment.
Understood. And I did see one other hand up before then, so I just want to apologize. I'm going to let Viral cut in line in front of you, just because they're with the applicant. So I will allow VBS to talk now.
Hello?
Hi there, we can hear you. Thank you for joining.
Yeah, no much more to add. I'm representing my mother-in-law. We're very grateful that everyone has worked on this and is taking the time to consider our application. We're very happy with what has been proposed. So I don't have much more to add, but if you do have any questions specifically for me, I'll be happy to answer those as well.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, Jennifer, any other public comments?
Yes, we do. And we do have Laura Nagle on the, the phone, online. I just asked her to unmute.
Hello, this is Laura Nagle.
Hi there, thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you for letting me speak. I, I am speaking for the property owners abutting a, a third parcel that is referenced in this agreement, which is two oh five Dune Crest Lane. And I, I know that's, it's a bit tangential to what you're doing today, but since it is referenced in some of your documents for this, we, we are writing to you about the development of two oh five Dune Crest Lane. It's the third undeveloped lot in this rezoning, in the rezoning that it had occurred. And even though it's not included in this agreement for twenty and twenty-two Spray, it is in the original Del Monte Beach Community Project and needs ultimately the same type of agreement with the city to extend development rights and water rights, which lapse at the end of this year for this property. It is our understanding that the owner slash developer is considering revisions to the building plans. Since the building permit has expired, we would like to see plan revisions reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee, giving the abutting owners an opportunity to review those plans. Nearly all of the abutting properties have had a change of ownership since the plans were approved over a decade ago. And as well, new properties have been built on those abutting lots or are under construction. We believe the plans for two oh five Dune Crest Lane could benefit from consideration of their interface with the changed environment. And I thank you for consideration of this request. It's, uh, this is made by the owners at five Dune Crest, Joe Fogel and Caroline Elliott, myself and my husband at seven Dune Crest Avenue, that's Laura and Harry Nagle, Kelly and Judy Conover at nine Dune Crest Avenue, Debbie Storzinski at one Dune Crest Avenue, and John and Vicky Furch at two oh nine Dune Crest Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I do see Sean Bridges' hand is raised. I don't, I'm not sure if it, it was again or before, but should I allow them to speak again? I'm sorry, what was that?
One boy was an apple.
That's right.
So no.
I give one opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for confirming, and that was our last hand raised.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion by commission?
I, I don't have anything to add. I think it seems relatively straightforward and non-controversial. I mean, I'd be happy to make the motion, but if people want to ask or comment, I mean, it's, it's, it's fine. I don't, I've.
Thanks, Hudson. Any other, any other comments? Yeah, I, I'm in support of the item. I just wanted to confirm that there isn't any change to the height limits allowed on these parcels, is there? It's still just the same regulations that applied when the subdivision was approved by the city council in two thousand and one?
And that's in fact what this development agreement does. This amended development agreement continues to cement the sixteen-foot height limit
Okay.
for these lots.
Great, thanks. Someone else? Chris, I have a question. The last person that spoke mentioned this third lot. How is that going to work out at this moment?
So there's currently, we currently have an application for some plan amendments to that, to that lot. They'll have to get an approved architectural review permit and a building permit before the contract, the, the development agreement expires in order to be able to build the home. Otherwise, they would have to extend the agreement or, or potentially apply for a new agreement, which I don't know, I would kind of.
That would end when?
I believe it was January seventeenth of twenty twenty-two, and I don't know the specific date. It's January of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
And, and I would, I, I would add to Chris's, with some uncertainty as to that end date. One of the things that we are addressing in the amendment is clarifying and narrowing the language that creates exceptions or arguable situations in which the term of the DA could have been extended. So there, it is likely that it terminates on January seventeen, but it, but it is something that could possibly be subject to some debate. And, and that is something that, again, the amendment that's in front of you right now completely addresses by being very specific about the, the termination date for the amendment that's in front of the commission tonight.
That's why I asked the question. Thank you. But it seems like staff reached out to the owners of two oh five Dune Crest Lane. And they've, so staff has sort of done their, you know, bit of notifying that this deadline is approaching, and they, I guess, feel confident that. and they, I guess, feel confident that they can get permits before that date, and it's not part of this application anyway.
It's not?
Correct, 205 Dune Crest Lane is not part of this application.
No, but the underlying rules, that's what I was asking about. Thanks. Okay. Hudson had a, was going to make a motion?
So I move that we adopt a resolution recommending that the city council, the city of Monterey, adopt the first amended development agreement for the Del Monte Beach Community as presented under the findings submitted in the packet.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Hudson and Sandy as the first and second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Your breath field?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Fletcher? Sorry, Commissioner Fletcher, what was that?
That was a yes.
Thank you, and Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you, that was unanimous.
Thank you. And then moving right along. Chris, you ready for another presentation?
Thank you, Chair. Let me just set full screen. Here we go. So we are returning with the hotel redevelopment project at 2101 North Fremont Street. And just some history. So on April 27th, the planning mission was presented this project and requested additional information regarding the improvements along the north and east perimeter lines, specifically the retaining walls adjacent to the multifamily property and the nearby, also adjacent commercial property, whether any additional landscaping could be incorporated into the project, and then also some clarification on the effect of the north side planting easement on the project. So the applicant did prepare site sections that show the heights of the retaining wall, as well as the, also added some screening walls adjacent to the parking lot. And I also have a better resolution image of those sections here. So you see generally the heights of the retaining walls and in combination, the stucco screening walls are six feet. And we did have some comments that I'll address, having to do with those stucco walls after these slides. And then also, you'll see here, the applicant did revise the plan to maintain the planting easement as landscaping, and also added a little bit more landscaping. You see on the left-hand side there, north of the building. So the staff did receive letters, and they were from the same letters, excuse me, the same representatives of the neighbor. And the neighbors maintained that the project is subject to the North Fremont specific plan, development standards, and specifically the height limit. The staff interpretation is that the project is subject to the VAF zoning standards, not the specific plan. The specific plan adoption records show that the VAF zone properties, when the specific plan was adopted, staff suggested to the city council that the specific VAF zone properties would require a charter amendment, and therefore a vote to be subject to the plan, and there was no vote, and therefore no amendment to the zone. We did receive new comments yesterday at just past 5:00 PM from the neighbors' representatives, Mr. Runkie, who had comments about the retaining, the combined height of the retaining wall and the screening wall suggesting that the screening walls should be six feet from the parking lot side. Staff reviewed the code, and I think this would be acceptable to allow for some privacy for the neighbors, and there's nothing in the code that would prohibit a combined retaining wall and screening wall height in excess of the combined retaining wall and six feet. So no problem there. And then, so the other letter from the applicant's legal counsel, Derek Oliver, also included the same arguments regarding the VAF zone and the North Fremont specific plan. And as I mentioned, staff still maintains that the VAF zone applies. However, the neighbor also included a noise study, which shows there would potentially be increased ambient noise from North Fremont Street due to the project, as well as noise from the project parking lot, specifically cars in the parking lot. So the staff is actually recommending that we continue the project to compare, prepare a noise study, which addresses those noise issues. I will note that the noise study included in the comments did say that a more detailed study would be necessary. So that is the staff recommendation. I am available for comments. Thank you.
Any questions of Chris?
I have one question. In the expansion of the landscape strip at the back of the hotel property, on the north side, dividing the hotel from this north side apartment complex, it looks like shrubs are going to be planted in a ground, and then there'll be a retaining wall at the parking lot level, but the shrubs will extend up beyond the retaining wall. So there'll be like a green screen in between the back of the hotel property and the beginning of the property to the north. What kind of shrubs and trees are going to be in the screen?
For the specific types, I would ask the applicant to answer that question. I did have a landscaping plan from the previous design, and I imagine that those were not going to change, but I would refer to the applicant.
And that's the reason I asked the question, because I didn't see anything on the previous plan that looked like it would provide that kind of dense green screen that's shown on the revised plan.
Is that our, is that part of our purview to look at the type of plants that would go in the screening? Isn't that ARC that would look at that and provide that information? We're just, we're here to do the, you know, the bulk of mass and site plan. We're not, we're not here to say what kind of trees or what kind of screening is going to be there. That we just say that there needs to be screening, and then that's up to the next group to actually say what the kind of screening should be.
Well, I think part, I think part of the topic here today is that the North Fremont specific plan does require a boundary, a noise boundary, between the residents and whatever is along North Fremont. That was a purely highly contested issue back when it was passed. The separation of residential and commercial. So I would ask Chris, if your opinion was based on what was before this latest decision about boundaries, or is it supplemental to it?
Can you clarify that question? I'm not sure I understand.
Well, you said that you just got, after five, you got these two new misses. Do they, they talk about this barrier, and so that was not included in the previous study, correct? You're. Can't hear you.
Yeah, you made it, Chris.
Thanks. The original design did not have the screening barriers. It did include retaining walls, which follow the same path of where the screening barrier would be.
Okay, but does North Fremont specific plan require some kind of sound protection between them?
The specific plan does not apply to the project, so this is something that the VAF zone requires.
Okay.
But it does, it does include the requirement for a screening wall and landscaping. It's not specific to any plant type. The specific plan, I guess, does have recommendations in terms of the types of landscaping that would be recommended, but those specific landscapes do not apply to this project as the VAF zone applies.
As I recall, last meeting, we were informed of that.
Yeah, but that's, that's why I ask. Sound mitigation, even with commercial, is not viable here. That's one of the complaints, is the noise.
So I think that's, that's part of staff's recommendation to return with more information on the sound impacts, and that type of study would include what would be necessary and feasible for mitigation.
Thank you. Answered my question, thanks. Any other questions before we open a public comment?
So my question, my question for you, Chris, is that, I mean, this new recommendation is not for tabling or for continuing it. That's not part of the staff, that's not part of the packet that we just reviewed, right? I mean, I just, I don't remember seeing anything about a sound study. And so this is all, this is all brand new since, you know, and then that last day or so, correct?
Correct. I received the emailed comments at 5:06, I believe, and reviewed those comments this morning.
Okay. And then my other question is that Kim and Chrissy and Adam, that, I mean, so it's the legal opinion of the city that this is, the VAF applies to this, and the North Fremont specific plan does not apply, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. But I just wanted to make sure that we got that out there, that that is what the city's official opinion is on this, and that we're not here to make that decision as commissioners.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. Okay, do we want to hear a presentation?
I have a couple of questions too.
Go ahead, go ahead, Terry.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up on Hudson's question, because that, which zone it's in is, of course, key to how it's, how height limits are analyzed. So is it, is it the case then that the fact that it's in the VAF zone allows them to do this height thing they're doing, where it's 35 feet on Fremont, but 42 feet on the downhill side? Is that what's going on?
Correct. There's no specific height limit in the VAF zone.
Okay, okay.
The height of the buildings, if I can add, is there's a density calculation that dictates the number of stories you can have, and there's really no limit.
Okay, so I have a couple of other questions. It appears, though, as though there have been changes to the parking plan since we last saw it three months ago. And I think the way they squeezed in this five-foot planting easement along that side, the backside, was by squeezing down the parking spaces down to sort of compact, basically. Can you describe what's changed to the parking plan since three months ago?
It can, and that's not actually what occurred, and it may actually be best for the applicant to show their presentation. They do a slide-by-slide show of the change. So actually, the building was reduced in size.
Oh, it was? Okay.
Wow.
A slight amount, the elevator was moved a bit, and the building was reduced.
Yeah, and the parking layout was, was changed. Okay, so that's a question to the applicant. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's open it up to the applicant's presentation.
So I, Jennifer, I know Mr. Peterson's a member of the public, and I see two other hands raised. I know Ms. Pendele is with the public. Let me just see if I.
You see Adriana?
What are we opening up to the public, the entire project or just the request to continue it for a noise study? Because if we're doing the former, we're going to be doing that again when it comes back to us. So I mean, you know, we want to reinvent the wheel or not? I'll do whatever the commission wants to do. I have no problem with either. But it would seem to me it'd be a waste of time and people's resources to come and make a presentation, and then have to make the same presentation when the matter comes back before us. If it comes back before us.
I'm sorry, Dan, repeat that?
I agree with Commissioner Milich.
Thank you. Any other opinions?
I agree with that as well. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're not going to, I mean, we're gonna continue it, let's continue it, and let's bring it all back, rather than, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to have to re-watch this in the next time, and I would prefer to have it fresh in my mind, rather than having to do it again.
Here, here.
Okay, I'll throw my opinion on with the other three. That makes it a majority. So anybody else have a dissenting opinion on what we should do?
Okay. I need to ask Ms. Davi if we can actually do that.
And I'd be happy to.
Or Miss, yeah, thank you, Adam.
Sure, if that might, I don't know if the city attorney's online, but. So you, you can certainly offer that as a request of the public, but it is possible that a member of the public has traveled the long distance or otherwise, and experienced difficulty or inconvenience to come to you tonight, and might want to speak on the full range of their views on the project. So.
I think we're not referring to the public, we're referring to the applicant.
Okay, so you can ask the applicant to narrow their comments at your request, but any member of the public, you can ask to narrow their comments, but they, they can, and the applicant could potentially also choose to speak on the overall project if they, if they desire to.
Okay, that makes it simple. Let's allow the applicant just to talk about the issues tonight.
If he wants.
At his discretion, of course.
So Jennifer, if you could unmute the last three digits, 959, and just see if that's the applicant, and the other potential is 330.
Okay, I am allowing last three digits, 959, to unmute and introduce yourself.
Hello?
Hey there, you're on with the Planning Commission. It looks like you're unmuted, so we should all be able to hear you.
Okay, I do have one question. Would we be able to put a playground in the open space area for all the children that live in the area? Or is that going to cause more problems with noise? But there are a lot of children that live in that area, and I was hoping that we could put, you know, just a little playground in the open space area. Is that a possibility?
Well, let Chris answer that.
Actually, if we can wait till the end of public comment, I see that under 330 is the applicant. So thank you very much for your public comment, and.
And your name, and who are you? Are you?
Sure, my name's Kimberly Cole. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Monterey. And the City Planning Commission most likely tonight will not be taking final action on this project. So we will definitely record your comment and include it in our thought process. We really appreciate it.
If I keep, if I keep listening, then I won't get an answer today. Is that correct?
Correct, most likely.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, Ms. Cole, and commissioners, I do appreciate your time that you've given to me.
Thank you. Thank you for providing your public comment, and just for the record, can I please have your name? If you don't mind sharing it.
I would rather not give my name right now, if that's okay? I just want a playground in the area, because so many children live there, in that area. But I know it's not on the agenda, and I know that I probably shouldn't even be calling in right now.
Thank you, ma'am.
But I saw that when there was that open space, I was just, just curious. But I do thank you, commissioners, for listening to me, and Ms. Cole, for giving me your time.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
All right, and we do have five hands raised.
So Jennifer, the applicant's the last three digits, three, three, oh.
Got it. I will allow them to speak right now and ask to unmute.
Hello, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, it's Anthony Lombardo. I represent Mr. Patel. Continuance unfortunately is extremely frustrating to Mr. Patel. As you know, we continued it three months ago. His frustration is not with the commission or the staff. His frustration is with the project opponent, because the reason staff is recommending a continuance is the fact that after 5:00 PM last night, basically, you know, six hours, seven hours, eight hours before this meeting, you, the staff received a letter from the attorney representing the next-door neighbor, which attached a letter from Walt Runkian Dost, which is, doesn't have anything new. It talks about the VAF zoning. But it also attaches a noise study, which purports to claim that without any reference to specific plans or any specific study of showing that measurements were made based on the plans that are being proposed, that there's a significant noise impact from this project. The reason I'm, and my client are extremely frustrated by this, because this project has been in, in planning for months and months and months, and the report that I just referenced to you was prepared on June seventeenth. If you look at the, the preparation date, it's June seventeenth. So the opponent could have provided this report anytime after June seventeenth, and given the staff and the applicant a fair chance to address it. But instead, they waited till the night before the hearing, which, to send it to the city, which of course could be only for the express purpose of causing further delay for this applicant. It's gaming the system, and it's not right to do. So they sat on that report for almost a month and a half, and then turned it in the night before the hearing to cause just exactly what's happened now. So it's unconscionable that the applicant would be treated this way. I, I wish I would say it would be, it was surprising to me that the opponent attempted this tactic, and apparently successfully, but we would hope that the commission could consider the application at a condition that says, you know, the noise attenuation wall there, the wall has to prevent, provide the proper noise attenuation. That's another way to go. But, you know, if, if the commission's will is to approve it, as I said, the getting, you know, allowing the opponent to game the system again, we would request that you continue it only till your next available hearing, because we already have a noise consultant working on a response for this, and we will turn it into you long before 5:00 PM, the night before your next hearing, as, as Commissioner Reed mentioned. Turning things in the night before, letters or long reports or things, they're, they're not expecting that Commissioner's gonna review them. They're, what they're expecting is just what they got, which is another delay in this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, we do have a number of hands raised here. First, I will, I will call on you, based on the order that I saw your hands raised. So up first, we have DP Peterson, five, nine, nine. I will allow you to talk and unmute.
In light of the potential change, I'll submit, excuse me, comments in writing, but this is the parking issue. So thank you for your time, and I'll get it sent in for the, be covered in your next meeting, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. And next, we do have Mary Penlay. Oh, I'm sorry, I clicked on the wrong person. Mary Penlay.
Hello?
Hi there, you're on with the Planning Commission. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. It's been very interesting to note what you have covered so far. I'm really concerned about water at this time, because if the Del Monte Beach Community Development has no water, and you're going from eighteen units with this Edville Hotel to forty-two units, I think you have a water issue. I know that the agenda planned tonight for staff to recommend a mitigated negative declaration, and that was the purpose of this meeting. And you're right, there's been a little bit of a, a curve in terms of addressing that. However, water is a major EIR issue. I know that the developers, Mr. Lombardo, do not want an EIR, and I understand it probably doesn't warrant that need. However, you have to look at water. And so I don't know what the VAF has for, you know, water restrictions, et cetera. You know, unfortunately, the North Fremont group has not kept up and, and voted, and been relevant in terms of its neighborhood. So I just asked that water be reconsidered, checked, city records, whatever's going on. As I said, eighteen to forty-two units is huge. And then, of course, I mentioned in my letter, the noise, definitely a consideration. Sewer, okay? Now, traffic along Fremont, as we know, flows, okay? But Casoverde is a different matter. So again, I hope that you address those issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Again, thank you for your patience, as I finish typing that. And next, we do have Henry Rook. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong.
Runkie.
Runkie.
Runkie, yes. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, we can hear you, and thank you for correcting me. Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I, but I am an architect, and I do deal with a lot of the rules and regulations when I approach a project. And one of the things that really stood out when I looked at the project was the, the height of the project. And the thirty-five feet that's identified in the specific plan seems pretty clear to me. When the issue of height got brought up, the city said, well, it's okay, because the VAF zone has no limitation on height, which is true. So if you have a project in the VAF zone, you are unlimited as far as height. You're unlimited as far as the number of stories. I believe Chris said that you're really limited just by the square footage of your parcel. So that tells you the density or number of hotel units. You could have, you know, twenty-five-hundred-foot hotel units if you wanted, and have a very big building. And I don't know that the community understood that, if that really is the case when the specific plan was developed a few years ago. One of the things that makes me think that it never was, was if you look at the specific plan, it does talk about land use development, and it does talk about projects and projects that exceed thirty-five feet in the visitor-serving area, and that they provide affordable housing units and additional parking that can be used by business district or fairgrounds during large events. So I'm, I'm a little perplexed why there's language in the specific plan that talks about VAF or visitor-serving areas. It also talks about up to fifty-foot-high buildings may be permitted in the visitor-serving area on the south side of North Fremont. I think that would give the layman, or in this case, you know, somebody designing the project, the, the distinct impression that the specific plan is what governs height. I don't think you would have read through this specific plan and think that I need to just apply the items identified in the zoning ordinance for the VAF zone. I don't know if the community understood that this could potentially create situations along Fremont where properties like this, it abut against residential areas, you could have a very, very tall structure. And although this project says that it's thirty-five feet along Fremont, as it gets back toward the residential sites, it gets much taller. In fact, I think that there was one point where you've got the elevator, that it's around forty-eight feet in height. I think it's about thirteen feet above the thirty-five-foot height limit. So anyway, I think that's a big consideration. I think it needs to be thought about. And I think there needs to be clarity. I, I know staff has the legal opinion that the, the, the VAF zoning governs, but I don't know that that was ever the intent. And I don't know if that was the understanding of the community when that plan was developed. So with that, I'll save my additional comments to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, anymore?
Yes, sorry about that. I thought it was muted. I could have been talking. Next, we have Derek Oliver. I will ask you to unmute.
Good evening, planning Commissioners and staff. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll keep it brief. My name is Derek Oliver, Fenton Keller Legal Counsel for the Maroon family, who own the property and apartment complex at four forty-five Casa Verde, directly adjacent and north to the proposed hotel project. I trust you received my two letters, and, and not gonna go through each of those now, but I want to make a couple of brief points that by way, first responding to Mr. Lombardo's accusations of intentional delay and, and gaming the system. Yes, we did have a noise impact report prepared, but the project had been withdrawn more than once and/or continued for the project applicant to make revisions to the, to the, to the plan, and for the Planning Commission to require certain elements, including those addressing noise, which were issues that were raised multiple times. I didn't get any notice of this hearing until the last Friday at nearly five o'clock, the last day before I was out for a week for a medical procedure. And at that time, talking about gamesmanship, that's when I, for the first time, received the letter from Mr. Lombardo's office dated June twenty-eighth. I didn't receive that letter until July seventeenth, literally five minutes, ten minutes before the close of business on a Friday. So I was out for a week and came back and did the best I could in hopes that the project would have made changes to the noise impacts issue. It did not. So therefore, I did my best to get a letter out and, and submit that as timely as I could. I, I, I don't, I don't know that the Planning Commission needed a letter from a noise expert to recognize that noise was a significant issue raised by numerous neighbors that needed to be further investigated. And so with that, I appreciate staff's recommendation to continue this for further review and analysis. Clearly, there is a difference of opinion here on the legal issues relating to what rules apply here. I think we can probably agree to disagree for now on the building height issue, and, but there are other issues that remain specifically as to noise, which you've met, which you've mentioned, noise and privacy screening, the proposed construction hours, and something else, the issue of notice. I, I don't, I'm not aware that there were any story polls that have gone up for this project, as were required, nor did I see anything in any of the notices or the staff report making the offer of proof, if you will, as to why story polls should not be required, given some perceived dangers. And I think it's only fair that the neighbors and the community at large be informed as to the mass of, of the project, whether or not the thirty-five-foot height limit applies in the specific plan or not. The notion that a project should be built as big as the applicant would like it to, neighbors be damned, is, is not something I think that the city or any of its constituents would want to get behind. And with that, I will reserve the remainder of my comments for the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, anymore?
Thank you. We do have two more hands raised currently. The next one is just, it's just called Guest. If you feel comfortable, please let us know your name for the record. And Guest, you should be on with the Planning Commission. You just need to unmute before we can hear you. I have asked this person, there's an option online. I can press the button that says Ask to unmute. I have pressed that a few times now. So I will say, let's revisit this commenter. After, there's another person called Leila Maroon. We will take your comment.
Hello, I'm here with my sister as well, Diane Maroon, and we both plan on saying a little bit something, starting with Diane.
My name is Diane Maroon, and I am manager.
I'm sorry, this just got much quieter when Diane started speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, that is better. We did hear Leila, but I didn't, I could not hear Diane.
Okay, so my name is Diane Maroon. I've managed our family's thirteen-unit apartment place, four, four, five Casa Verde Way, for a few years now. Many tenants have been living here since it was remodeled in two thousand seventeen, when we bought the property from the Dobbies. There are many families with children and pets, and are very upset and disturbed at the enormous project's demolition, cleanup, and construction looming in the next few years. We all understand development can be an improvement in our future, but all in moderation. Going from a two-story to a four-story from our vantage point is quite distressing. For two to three years, there will be demolition, cleanup, construction from seven AM to seven PM, slightly fewer hours on the weekend. That means that our tenants will have to put up with the noise during breakfast, lunch, and dinner. When will babies, toddlers, and elderly be able to sleep or take a nap? Or just have a peaceful moment during the day? We need to be treated sensitively and have these allowed hours reduced. Will dogs bark all day? Will tenants with anxiety and other medical and health concerns go into a health decline state, needing medical attention and hospitalization and relocation? When tenants do relocate, who will want to live next to this noisy and dusty construction site? Where will all the mice and other rodents go when the old motel is torn down, most likely to our property? In the past, we've complained to the motel's management of motel guests disrespecting our property by throwing needles, glass bottles, and garbage outside their rooms onto our property. Nothing was done, no cleanup was offered. Is there going to be a dedicated official hotline who can be called to physically monitor and enforce the noise and desk rules? Will there be fines or shutdowns for repeated offenses? We've been through this before, and our complaints fell on deaf ears. The new design results in noise from hotel guest cars twenty-four-seven, guests loading and unloading themselves and luggage, traffic in and out on their Casa Verde driveway, adjacent to our only one driveway on Casa Verde, and will create a difficult and dangerous situation for their guests and our tenants. That corner's traffic is busy enough as it is, especially with the corner gas station and short distance to the freeway. Not only will it be noisy, but dangerous. For the sake of the residents, please follow the rules intended to keep our community a pleasant and peaceful place to live. The rules and regulations call out for sensitivity when building adjacent to residential communities. This project has not come close to retaining any quality of life for tenants who can't escape the noisy, dusty, and dirty environment created by this enormous scope of a project. Thank you.
So, um, I'm Leila Maroon and um. I'm he- I'm here to provide uh, uh, my input on. So, um. There was mention of, you know, what voters understood when they uh, voted. One thing that's come up in correspondence is that the sensitivity to the neighborhood doesn't apply either. That by a vote of the people, it, it's not in the document that uh. That is in the opinion of some to apply. Well, on, on that note, the insens- insensitivity to neighborhood. Visitors may come once a year, once every five years or once in a lifetime to stay at a hotel. While locals and neighbors, including our many tenants in our thirteen unit apartment building. Are here twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Yet the owners rather say sensitivity doesn't apply and take visitor accommodation. Over the enjoyment and quality life of the locals and neighbors. I don't believe the voters chose to have it this way or agree to this. I also had comments on, on noise and security issues. Um, it looks like the noise is uh, continued, so. Um. I'll just bring up some of the security issues. I didn't notice any uh, barrier between. Our property and the hotel property on, on Casa Verde Way. There's an illustration. It just shows it all open, so. It, it, any one from the hotel site could walk directly into our property. And tha- that's not what uh, crime prevention through environmental design encompasses. Which is one of the claims of the project. So there also needs to be security consideration to, to keep our property secure. And not allow easy trespassing. And then lighting is also a factor that needs to be considered. The, the site should be well lit. And I only noticed three light poles in the parking area of what was submitted for the hotel. So that, so a, a wall needs to be constructed that, that's higher than is there. And consideration for lighting up the parking lots needs, needs to be made as well. On the building height size issue.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
Good job.
Thank you. We have any more?
That was our last hand raised. Oh, I did see guest again, so hopefully, oh. Just kidding, the hand just went down. Um. Again, to provide public comment, there is a raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen if you are joined by Zoom. Um, otherwise, if you're de- calling in by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And Leila Maroon just raised her hand again, but I'm sorry, we've already confirmed in this meeting that public commenters are allowed one chance at speaking. Um, so I have to lower that hand, I am sorry. Um, and then that is the last hand raised that we had.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the commission.
I move that we continue it for till the second meeting in uh, August.
Before, but, I mean, I just before we.
For receipt of noise, for receipt of a noise study.
Yeah, but I don't mind continuing it. Um, but what I, but I also think that we need um. A. Lesson on VAF. Um, as part of the staff presentation. Um, why the voters instituted the VAF? Um, what it takes to modify VAF? Um, cause there's a lot of history about that and that is getting missed. It, in this whole discussion. Um, that, that it seems like, well, the voters, the voters voted in for the VAF. Many, many, many years ago to stop development in the eighties. Um, and it capped the, the VAF uh, where it was. And that's just the way, I mean, there was a different issue back then. Um, a- a- and tha- that's just the, the way that we have it. And, but I think in order for everybody and all the public, uh, the citizens to understand. How, how we got to this point, uh, we need a recap of, of, of the history of VAF and, and how it came to be. And then what are the requirements to change it? Because then I think that that is, there's a. Distinction between VAF and the North Fremont specific plan that again, needs to be dealt with that. This is VAF, the North Fremont specific plan, because I was on the planning commission when the North, I was on like the subcommittee, but. You know, that this was, I was part of the planning commission when the North uh, specific, uh, North Fremont specific plan was put in place. And I can tell you that the VAF part of that discussion was discussed a lot. And that it would not apply um, to VAF. Um, so I mean, that, that everybody on planning and, and those meetings knew that, that VAF was separate and above and beyond. What's North uh, North, the North Fremont specific plan occurred. So I just, uh, before I get, that's my recommendation to staff. I would second the motion to continue it.
Thank you.
Uh, date certain, but again, I, I want to date certain. Um, and then staff can give us that. Um, but. You know, I, I, again, I think we need that, that additional information for the public.
Well.
Are we allowed to make a comment? Before the motion is voted upon?
Yes, ma'am.
Further discussion, yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is my comment. I want, with all due respect to Hanson. And I do agree that landscaping is normally part of the ARC purview. And we're uh, operating on a vote for a use permit. The planning commission, and I'm reading from this page, asked for three things. One was clarification on the improvements. Uh, at the project boundaries along the north and east property line. Well, that north uh, property line is the one we're talking about. The one that divides the apartment complex from the future hotel parking area. The second point was whether any additional landscaping could be incorporated. And the third one was additional information regarding the five-foot planting easement at the north side. So for that reason, I thought that it was probably appropriate to ask what it was they planned to put in. Um, if it, you know, should it be tall? Should it be a soundproof? Should it mitigate the noise factor? The trash dropping into their property? I think it would be a pretty good idea for the applicant to give a little more detail there. Even though normally the landscape is the purview of the ARC.
Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a few. So I, I agree with Hanson's request of staff that, that we get some clarity on VAF. I think that's a very good idea. Um, I also, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner. Uh, Vice Chair Freeman's uh, comment, you know, when she was asking for that information about. What was being planted in that area, she wasn't asking to approve or deny or necessarily. You know, uh, you know, make that part of the approval process. It was just purely informational. Uh, tha- then I think uh, that was a reasonable request. Uh, could, but it also, it's true that, that, that is the ARC's purview. But it's information that's probably there on the landscape plan. It would be a easy thing to answer. And then finally, um, the, you know, I, my understanding of this, Kim. Is that the, um, this letter was received that included this, uh, this noise study. These are kind of heavy CQ kind of issues and staff determined that, yeah, the noise thing. Is a secret thing that needs to be addressed. So that, that is, that basically how it came down.
Correct. After we read the letter this morning and the letter that was submitted from the noise consultant, um, we wanted to. Look at that in more detail with the applicant.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry.
How much time are you asking for, Kim?
Um, we're asking for a continuance through August twenty fourth. It'll be dependent on a new noise study. Um.
Okay, that's the second meeting in the month's schedule.
Correct. We can't, otherwise the packet is published next Thursday. So I ca- there's just no way to get that done by next Thursday.
And, and I was just gonna finally say that I, you know, I'm sorry that the applicant feels burned in this process or sabotaged in a. You know, a twelfth hour supplemental, uh, that, that's always, um, it is frustrating for applicants to have. Twelfth hour disclosures like that. But it's, you know, it is a significant. Um, sequel issue and I, I think it does bear scrutiny, so I, I, I support the motion.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else? Uh, I find myself in a position where I agree with Hudson's suggestion. But also agree with Sandy's in this, in the respect that. Having went through the North Fremont specific plan for a year of weekly meetings. We talked a lot about the interchange between commercial and, and residential. And so I thought that the original question of regarding what kind of. Landscaping was pertinent to the noise issue. Because that was the whole focus of many of those meetings. And I, I'm a little concerned that. It's just going to be some landscaping, but. With all the capabilities that the industry has at its access now of sound blockage. That we can't. The planning commission can't recognize. That there's gotta be a step between all that discussion regarding this noise issue. When it was North Fremont specific plan and VAF. Trying to make a marriage between them even in those meetings. But it's just not getting better when we're not examining those noise issues. So I, I agree with my other commissioners. Thank you. And if, based on that, we have a first and a second, any other discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Sandy wants to say something.
No, 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 I'm gonna vote.
Okay. Saw that hand go up.
All right, and just to confirm, this vote is to continue this item to a date certain of August twenty fourth, twenty twenty-one. First up, we have Chair Rastfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
See, I made the motion. I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Great, this situation has passed unanimously.
Thank you for the presentation. I think that next item up, since we're just about to the end. Is any issues coming before the commission that Kim may have for us?
Oh, um, the next item on the agenda is the rotation of chair and vice chair. And just a brief mention, um, base, you're all very familiar with the council policy. The next chair that um, would be proposed would be Sandy Freeman. Um, she's been our vice chair for the past year and has not previously served as chair. And the next chair, uh, vice chair after that would be Ponson Reed. He served as those positions many years ago and he would be next up in the rotation.
Sounds good. Do we need to do a motion?
Go move.
I'll second that.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion? All I'll say is good luck. And we will have a vote.
Great, and first Chair Rastfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Right, yeah.
And Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Great, congratulations, new chair and vice chair. You are confirmed unanimously.
A big thank you to Mike Rastfield for the past year and a half. So thank you very much, Mike, for all your service.
I appreciate all the support I get from this commission. I needed it.
Yeah, thanks for serving half of my term. I appreciate that.
Those are great, sir.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. Um, the appeal, there was an appeal heard by the city council. On two hundred Glenwood Circle and the wireless facility. And the council upheld the decision of the planning commission and approved the rooftop modification. Um. And then I guess just the other, we do look like we have a use permit coming forward for August eighth. It's a fairly small use permit application. It should be August tenth. I think that's the wrong date. It's the next planning commission meeting, August tenth, so I just need to confirm that tomorrow. But other than that, um, I just want to thank the planning commission. Um, it's been unexpectedly a little bit of a rough go in the last few weeks. And um, we're looking forward to um, me being back up to speed here shortly. And um, also, um, Fernanda will be returning to our staff. Probably in early October. She had a beautiful little boy, so I want to congratulate her on that. And I'm in the process of hiring an associate planner. So I expect us to be fully staffed again by October, right around early October, so. That's exciting for us and thank you for um, being patient with us as we're going through. The baby was expected, my leg wasn't expected, so sorry about that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, I'll bid everybody good night and.
I just have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner commented, and so, um. I would appreciate it if we do not, if we're gonna do um. Something that is, is um, agendized for three hours, that we don't do it four to seven. Um, that just is, it's, it's just an inappropriate timeframe um, to have to, if, if this were to drag on. To have us effectively work um, for three hours in the late afternoon through seven o'clock. I, I just don't, I, I don't think that that's an appropriate timeframe. That if we're gonna do the, do it for three hours, do it at the seven o'clock timeframe versus the four o'clock timeframe. I, I, that's just, it's, it's, it's inappropriate for, to put us in that position.
Appreciate the input. We will work on that.
Any other comments?
I would prefer four to seven, myself, I prefer from seven to ten.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else?
Thanks, Mike, for your service. You did a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Do you expect us to be back in council chambers?
Yeah, I think we could be back as early as, Jennifer, did the notices already go out for August tenth? We could be back in as early as August tenth or definitely for August twenty-fourth.
We are creating the notices this week for the August tenth meeting. Um, and that is expected to be on a hybrid format. So the planning, planning division is moving all of our BCCs to a hybrid format. As of right now, this may change given a CDC guidance on mask requirements and social distancing, et cetera. Uh, but as of now, we plan to move our meetings to hybrid, beginning with ARC on eight ORE.
What is, what is the hybrid name? Do we, can we still remotely block in as commissioners? Okay.
Yes, you can.
Okay, good.
And um, if you are in the chambers and you've provided attestation of vaccination. The current rule today is you don't have to wear a mask. But that rule may very well change by August tenth based on what's happening with the variants. So we saw the council, a month, the councils, I think, held two meetings, I think, in person. At the first one, three people weren't wearing masks. At the last meeting, um, everybody was wearing a mask, so. That's where we're at. And this.
I just would like to add a little comment about masks. When people are wearing masks, all men are handsome and all women are beautiful. When people are wearing masks, all men are handsome and all women are beautiful.
Uh, okay. Get well, Kim.
Thank you.
I'll say, good night. Thank you.
Night.
Good night, all.